Welcome to the Biloxi City Council Meeting, Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in our annual one-thirtieth meeting. I'm gonna ask for the occasion of this weekend Pastor Eric E. Dickey from First Missionary Baptist Church, my pastor and former council member, to start us off with a prayer praying for our injured.
We all stand and pray. For our mayor and our city council members, we ask, oh God, that you would continue to give them the knowledge, the understanding, to work together in unison. And then, oh God, we thank you for the citizens, as well as those who come as tourists on various occasions to enjoy our beautiful Mississippi Gulf Coast. And also, oh Lord, we pray mildly for our first responders, for who put their lives on the line every single day. We just hope, oh God, in this meeting, that we're able to come together more in unison and in harmony for the good of the people. Bless our peoples in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, we do for you. Every heart say amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Dickey.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Dickey. Thank you, Mr. Demin. I need a motion on the agenda.
A move.
Move by Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions?
Is there anything going, anything?
There's no changes.
No changes.
Okay. Okay, call for the question, all in favor? Okay, seven zero, motion carry, agenda accepted. Presentation agenda, mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I would ask Ms. Biloxi Forever to come up to the front for Susan Hunt, so we can present this very important proclamation.
Let's get organized.
You're well organized. I'm sorry you didn't get to meet John Favolta.
I know it, you left me here.
And I didn't either. But whereas this proclamation, the city of Biloxi, Biloxi Excel by Five, and local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April first through the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation for learning for the children in Biloxi. Whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of the young children in Biloxi deserve thanks and recognition. Whereas Biloxi policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to the young child's future. Therefore, I Andrew Fofo Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, do hereby proclaim the week of April first through the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the week of the young child. So we congratulate you for everything.
Thank you very, very much, and I want you to know that the city does certificates for all of our childcare centers in Biloxi. So we do a basket of goodies and take around to the childcare centers, and we will deliver those at the end of this month. They couldn't be here today because it's hard for them to leave because they're sometimes serving lunch with the young people. So I thank you very, very much. I thank all your support for Biloxi Excel by Five and all our young children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Next. Yeah.
I get to stay up here longer?
Susan, Susan.
Y'all knew I was coming today, didn't you? How do you know? That's right.
Susan.
Oh, my microphone. John, you don't think I'm loud enough? I'm here to make our report. We do it four times a year. What's your name? Anna Harris is our executive director of the Biloxi of the Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum. So we come four times a year to tell everybody all the things that we are doing, and she's got the data and the statistics. However, guess what I have for all of y'all?
Amen.
Today in Mississippi, they did a story on the Mardi Gras. Anna's gonna pass, each one of you'll get a copy, and I want you to have it framed and hung at your house.
Will you sign mine? Will you sign mine?
Yes, I will. I'll get, and I'll also get Madison and Bobby Niesel to sign. So each one of you got a copy, the story's on page twenty, and it talks about the Mardi Gras museum and all the different things that happened with Mardi Gras. So I'm gonna ask Anna to come up. You all have your data sheet, and she's gonna go in. And I always tell y'all, thank you so much for what you've done for the Mississippi Mardi Gras museum. Thank you very, very much.
Welcome.
As Susan said, thank you so much. So this report is from January through March of two thousand and twenty-three. We had nine hundred visitors from many different states and two different countries, several from Canada and Germany. And we had ninety-six total visitors that came in on seven different tours and field trips. And of course, we especially want to thank you for the wonderful partnership we have with Twelfth Night Celebration. That was just record-breaking this year, it was fabulous. And the Children's Shoebox Float Contest, as well as the Biloxi Children's Marching Parade and Costume Contest, which was rescheduled this year without the parade, but we still had a wonderful celebration. We also had several great lectures and programming throughout the Mardi Gras season, and we're just finishing up an exhibition of costumes that went to the National Czech and Slovak Museum in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, so they have returned home. We're excited about that, so thank you again for your support, we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna do a brief written statement here, but I do wanna say, welcome everyone here. And that was the strongest pledge of allegiance I've ever heard in this building, so welcome everyone. It is good. We got the high sheriff is here, thank you, a lot of law enforcement's here, and I think we got some representatives, board of supervisors, all in here, thank you. This is, no. Back off. This is an important statement that I think we use this one. Thanks. So let me say, the past weekend... All right, we ready? This past weekend, spring breakers saturated our roadways and businesses throughout Biloxi to enjoy what our coast has had to offer. But a number of incidents across the city, from Wool Market to Point Cadet, have caused concern regarding the two thousand and twenty-three event. Most serious of these incidents involved the shootings around the Coliseum and surrounding neighborhoods. In addition, a great concern is the near traffic, total traffic congestion and behavior that came along with the crowd of over thirty thousand. In today's world, guns, drugs, and alcohol is a deadly recipe, and that's what we just experienced. This event has been thrust upon Biloxi for a couple of decades now. Public safety is our responsibility for our visitors, and most importantly, our residents. Again, the safety and well-being of our citizens and our first responders are the number one priority. Biloxi is head to react to what promoters have brought to this event without due consideration to the consequences, both financial and quality of life. The result has been a significant cost of manpower and resources that could be better used. Our priority is keeping Biloxi safe, friendly, and beautiful. I applaud the efforts of all of our law enforcement for controlling the situation that could have turned out so much worse. We are in action, after-action analysis right now. We're working closely with Chief Miller and other officials from tourist destinations that have had same problems with similar events. The intent is for the administration and the council to devise a plan to strengthen or replace ordinances to ensure that these events that pose a threat to our community and our national reputation are no longer welcome. This would include no permit zones, curfews, further restrictions of parking, traffic, and concert limitations. Let me assure everyone that the city will do everything in its power to prevent the problems that we've had just experienced from reoccurring. This won't happen again. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. That concludes your...
Wait, let me ask Chief Miller to come up and give us some updates, because we have been working with him, and he's been working the whole country with regard to... Chief, if you just give us an update to what you heard from the chiefs of Florida.
Certainly, certainly. So let me start by, I know that each one of you, including the mayor, myself, Mr. Leonard, I know our attorney Peter A. Bod, everybody received a great number of text messages and calls and complaints, and they were all justified, the majority were justified about what was taking place. You know, we allow everybody to come to our community, we're a very open community. We always do our very best to make sure that everybody has a good time while they're here, and all we've ever asked is that they be on their best conduct. But that didn't happen this weekend, and I tried to determine why it was different. Now, it's been a buildup over the last few years, it's gotten a little bit worse each year. But this year, the crowd number, although large, I don't believe was as large as it has been in the past. But we had some very bad players here, and I just couldn't determine why we had, why it was such a change. So I talked to a friend of mine, who's a high-ranking law enforcement official in Florida, and he was very frank and honest with me, and told me that he had been part of a conversation between police chiefs in Florida. And during that conversation, because of the laws and ordinances that they've implemented in the state of Florida for this exact event, he said that the statement was made, man, we feel sorry for Biloxi. Because they knew that these folks were not gonna come back to their community simply because of the regulations that were in place. And I don't think these regulations, I've read them, I've looked at them, I don't think it's anything, the mayor's looked at them, we don't think it's anything that people should not be able to live by. There's nothing there that's targeting any group or gender or race. They are simply a set of rules that you need to abide by if you're coming into someone else's community, the way you should act. You know, I regret, and he regretted, that that call was not made to us to tell us that they were coming, and they knew they were coming because some of these folks had told them, we're gonna go to Biloxi, that's where we're headed. So some of the people that we had here this year were not people that we had had before. Some of them were just bad actors, and I'm not gonna put all the blame on every person that came here, but I am gonna say this, the promoters that we allowed to promote this year did a horrible job. And the mayor and I have talked about that, and we know that in the future, these promoters are gonna have to stand up, and they're gonna have to do a better if any event comes to the city. They seem to be only concerned with making money, and you know, I'm sure that's a concern for everybody, but you take on a responsibility when you're an event organizer, you take on that responsibility that you have to treat the people in the community that you're in with dignity and respect. And so I am a hundred percent sure that every citizen that called was in peril and was worried and scared. I honestly believe that. I can tell you that first responders, it got to the point that first responders, who usually run into burning buildings and gunfire, and you know, they don't run from it, they run to it. They were concerned, to the point where next year, I'm not sure I'm gonna have policemen that are gonna step forward and do this. Because they view it as, you know, why would we be put into this situation? They're willing to risk their lives every day for the job, the profession that they believe in. But why would we knowingly put them into a situation like that? So I think we're gonna have some problems unless some things are changed. And I know the mayor and I have both been working on changing these things, and you're gonna see that change take place. You know, we had, I went back and went back for several years just to see what the differences were. And this year, it was much, much, much different. I'm just gonna give you a couple of stats, and then I'll try to get off the soapbox. So we had the homicide, right, we had one homicide. That young man was from Tyler Town, Mississippi, and the person that killed him was from Louisiana. We had seven aggravated assaults, seven aggravated assaults. And the majority of that seven were on police officers. I have, if we have one assault of a police officer during any event ever, that's a big number. Here we had seven, and I could actually, I could probably bring that number up to twelve if I included the bottles that were thrown at law enforcement and first responders, and if I included, you know, vehicles that were out of control, that could have injured law enforcement. So I could make those numbers even higher if I wanted to. But here's one that'll jump out at ya. Forty-one, forty-one complaints that were linked to guns, forty-one. I don't know why you would come to a party to have a good time and feel the need to have a gun with you. I just, I don't, I don't understand that. But nonetheless, that's what happened. The officer that was shot, along with the other, the other four people that were shot with him, he's doing, he's doing, he's in good shape. You know, we're just worried about if he'll ever be able to handle a gun again with nerve damage in his arm. The other four people, two of them were released that night with superficial gunshot wounds, and two of them were in guarded and serious condition, and I do not have their condition right now, I was not able to get that today. But that is, that's five people. I don't ever remember an event where five people were shot at one time. I just, I don't, that has not happened. So obviously, the people that we had here were not the decent people that we want coming to Biloxi. The folks that were in charge of these different venues, and the mayor and I have talked about that, I assure you, they will be vetted in the future. And if they're not a stand-up, good, decent businessperson, we're not, we're not going to allow them, am I right, Mayor? We're not going to allow them to do business in Biloxi. They feel no responsibility to our community here, and that was, that was very obvious. If there's any questions, I'll take those now.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I do have a question. Thank you, Chief, and I'm glad to hear that the officer's doing well. You had mentioned a couple of times before in previous meetings that we're short on manpower in law enforcement, officers with warrants. And for a city this size, I think you had mentioned one time that optimally we'd have about a hundred and sixty officers?
That's where we need to be, yes, sir.
And where are we as of today?
We're about one thirty-five right now, but that's not due to anything other than people just don't wanna be the police anymore.
Right, and it's not a challenge just for Biloxi, this is true across the nation, particularly here on the coast and everything.
Nationwide.
Let me eject also, I didn't mean to interrupt, but...
Go ahead.
Scott, you know, had a meeting with some of the folks in Gulfport. They had over three hundred something gun in this past event. So the guns are everywhere, and as well as Sheriff Peterson indicated, I think the situation was like two hundred to one, wasn't it, Sheriff Peterson? That's what we thought. Yeah, so no matter what it is, that ratio will not, you know, we don't have enough officers in the state to handle what we're faced with. So it is... Yeah, well, anyway, that, that, that's, you know, what we...
Hey, you know, excuse us, councilman.
Not yet, not yet.
So hold it down, sir. So we're gonna have to hold, so we're gonna have to hold that down.
There'll be opportunity to express...
Removing from the room.
But you know, the point is, as I said, in today's world, guns, drugs, and alcohol is deadly, the deadly recipe, and that's what we faced over and over again. Last three years, we talked about how many gun confiscation in the last two or three years. You never seen anything like this, you never seen the shell casings of people just shooting guns.
Well, you're absolutely right, Mayor, and the sheriff said it best earlier that we don't have the infrastructure or enough policemen or law enforcement to deal with this situation the way it was this past weekend. Simply put, we expect people to come here and act decent, and they did not this time.
The only reason I bring that up is timely enforcement, when you gotta have it, you gotta have it. And for these special occasions, in the past, we've always worked with other law enforcement agencies throughout the state, hired folks to come down and assist us. That's not the case anymore because they're facing the same issues that we are in terms of manpower. That's the first point I wanted to make.
That is a good point, and I appreciate that, and some of the officers that we were able to bring down assured us that they would not be back.
No, I can understand that. The second thing is that these web-based events, this event is singularly different than the other events that the city sponsors, and the city is not a sponsor for Spring Break. There's been some rumors out there that, yeah, the city does support it. The city does not sponsor it as an event. But these web-based events that pop up have, we've got to establish guidelines and timelines, as you said, Chief, to vet these promoters and these vendors, and where they're gonna be, and how, anybody else would have to say, if I'm selling hamburgers at this location, where are these people gonna park? That's, that's part of this. So I just think a thoughtful examination of the key factors involved, and that may be what you're referring to when you referred to the law enforcement in Florida, would help us resolve this issue. But I think when we collect this information, whether it's a permit application you have to fill out, there's got to be time for law enforcement to run these background checks to determine who's where and to plan accordingly. That's, I can't add anything to what the mayor said earlier. I know, I suspect we have a number of people who wanna speak here today. And a little later on, council comments, I'll have another comment, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Demin, you have any questions for Chief Miller?
Yeah, Chief, I know you said you reached out to the people in Florida. Have you reached out to the people in Atlanta? Atlanta was really a home of what was casually termed Freaknik, right? It started out as HBCU Spring Break, and it turned and it evolved into a completely different thing. And they were somehow able to disincentivize the groups from coming back to Atlanta. I don't know if you've looked into what they did.
The traffic plan that we currently use was the traffic plan that we went to Atlanta, and they showed us how they ran traffic for Freaknik. So that is currently the traffic plan that we use with the cones, very similar.
Was that the only technique they used was?
No, they used a lot of the same techniques that you see in Florida with ordinances against alcohol on the beach, or just a whole host of different ordinances. And some of those ordinances actually address promoters and promoters that do pop-up parties that are, you know, social internet-based pop-up parties and what can be done with them. And every bit of it makes a lot of sense, I mean, you have to hold people responsible, especially if they're gonna come here and they plan on making some money and putting on an event, they have to be responsible for what they're doing, and currently, we really, we really have not held them, held them responsible.
Well, holding people responsible requires the manpower to do it, right? Enforcement's the problem, and I know when I was reading, in some of the preliminary studies, that was what a lot of the people that gave reports or spoke to the news or the media about Atlanta was there was cops everywhere. So less and less college kids wanted to go out because it was an older crowd, and the older crowd didn't wanna be back because of the cops. And so if we're having a hard time getting police, it's a tough problem to remedy.
It is a tough problem to remedy, but that's when we have to use our imagination, we have to make sure that these ordinances are rock-solid and in place, and they can be. It doesn't take a lot of policemen to deal with one promoter and what he should be doing.
Well, I look forward to seeing these and hopefully in action next year.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for the chief? Questions for the chief?
Chief, you know the city of Biloxi, we support you. We have to add the police department, we're not like San Francisco and these other cities. You have to always consider the safety of the people and the safety of the city. You have an event that happened this weekend, we lost safety. People were scared, scared to leave their home. So whatever we have to do to step up to do that, that's what the people wanna see, that's what the people wanna hear. How can we handle it, or if we have to get rid of it, you have to get rid of it. Whatever the best way to go, you can try what you wanna do, because they just moved from, they moved from Florida, moved to Atlanta, they're here right now, and they'll go to another spot. I mean, it's just, but any event that creates that much problem in your city is something you gotta pay attention to.
I absolutely agree with you, Councilman.
And let me add too, I think, and Chief has learned, the same promoters have a circuit that they look, they found that Biloxi was the weak area to actually do their business. So we plan to put together what we, we asked from the council to strengthen, what we need to strengthen. And you know, this is an extraordinary event, you know, as far, I talked a little bit about cost and that sort of thing, but the duration of this event is what has put, I mean, we started this at least Wednesday, a really intense interaction with everyone regarding what's gonna happen, these pop-up parties and some of the internet stuff was doing. But this is, the duration was extraordinary, it's not just, you know, the seventy-two hours, it's longer than that, and we're working...
Months beforehand.
Right, and it's twenty-four hours a day, there's no, not like a, you know, Mardi Gras parade, you do a parade and it's done, it's twenty-four hours, and you know, and cost to do a parade. I think we talked about seventy thousand dollars to do a Mardi Gras parade. And this is, you know, this is multiples of that, and with danger, more danger than we faced ever before. Again, today's, today's world, that same weekend, how many, we had four in Alabama killed, two in Kentucky because of this deadly combination of things, and it's the world we face today. And we'll do our best to, you know, to do what needs to be done to keep this from happening again. So I thank you, Chief, I thank everybody here that has concern for our, you know, our community. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
I think we got one more question for Ms. Newman.
So from what I've gathered, all events, cruising the coast and all this, they always come to us for approval, they give us their plan, and then, you know, we go from there. It seems like, because we've had many discussions of this event through the years, the promoters just promote it, and then we are left to just try to do the best we can. They don't come to us with a plan or anything like that.
Talking about for this, this event.
This particular event.
Yes, ma'am.
From what I've already gathered, they're already promoting for next year.
It is.
So it's like, well, what are we supposed to do? How are we supposed to shut that down? Are we gonna hold the promoter, do we even know who the promoter is? Because one year we didn't, did we find out who it is? You know, can we, are we going to take any action to keep them accountable for what has already happened? And what are we gonna do about next year? Because it's already...
This year, there was at least four separate promoters.
Okay. So any action, we're maybe looking into to hold them accountable for what has already happened?
Well, again, we know the who, and we know what we need to do to, you know, to actually move them to another location.
This is a, this is a close, right now, we're gonna have, let me, excuse me. This, right now, we're gonna give the citizens an opportunity to speak. So let's try to stay in order with the agenda, please, and please let us continue with the meeting. We're gonna give you the opportunity to speak.
Well, and again, not to beat this horse, but that, you know, the tremendous cost, financial cost that we've expended without any kind of revenue offset. I mean, we got a little bit, maybe thirty-eight licenses, Jerry, how many, how many privilege licenses? And that's about a hundred dollars thing. So you're talking about hundreds of thousands versus tens of thousands, maybe eight thousand dollars worth of return. Everything else is thrust upon us. So you know, our intent is to change that situation. It's not all, it's public safety is the number one thing, but you know, from a financial standpoint, we can't do that. We can't do, face these things again.
But by the end of next week, we'll have the financials together, and you'll see what this event cost just the city of Biloxi and the different departments in Biloxi, and I think it's probably going to amaze you what it actually cost.
Okay, that's it, you got a question? Okay, let's keep it to questions, please, for the chief, so we can...
I know we had a lot, a lot of extra patrol came down from differences, and you said they're not coming back?
They made it pretty clear to us that the majority of them don't plan on coming back.
No, that's, that's a major problem for us. You have an event like that that causes this much problem, you definitely just don't need to have this event again, period.
Well, you'll see, you'll see tourists, this is all over Facebook, and there's probably tourists that would, that planned on coming here for their vacation, and you know, some of them may not come either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? That's it? Okay, thank you, Chief.
That concludes my report.
That concludes the mayor's report. We're gonna move on to B, departmental reports. I don't see any departmental reports prior to going into our council report. I don't see any departmental reports prior to going into our council report. Mayor, you already acknowledged Sheriff Troy Peterson. You already acknowledged Marvin Ladner, supervisor, Senator Joe Carter, raise your hand. Jeffrey Holm, state representative, raise your hand. And I see Ms. Beverly Martin, raise your hand, Ms. Beverly Martin, that's our supervisor. And I thank you guys for coming to our meeting. Okay, we're going to move on to C, council report. I'm going to start to my far right.
All right, I'd like to start by thanking everyone for coming to today's meeting. This is what it should be like a lot more often, people voicing their opinions. And I'm thankful for our first responders, Chief Miller, his team. Mr. Geiser and his team do an amazing job, and we're blessed to have the first responders that we have in this city. And it's always terrible when there's unnecessary injury or a death. And this weekend, we experienced both of that in our city, as already has been said. And, and it's, we're thankful that there weren't any life-threatening injuries to our officer and to those that, that, you know, did, did pass condolences to those families. We're blessed to live in an amazing place here in Biloxi, and as elected officials and leaders, we have a responsibility and a duty to do everything that we can to watch over its residents, its businesses, and those to come to visit us from all over the United States and even the world. While we can't change the past, we can learn from it and take action accordingly. And some of the things that occurred this past weekend, as has already been said, require action immediately. To our residents, businesses, and especially our first responders, some of the things that you witnessed and had to endure this weekend are not fair to you, and for that, we're sorry. Word seven is the area of Biloxi that I represent, which, word seven, the area of Biloxi that I represent, which mainly consists of the Wool Market area, is a quiet, close-knit, family-oriented community. This past Friday, one of our residents that I see is in the room today, thought it was a good idea to host a commercial spring break party in a residential neighborhood, small residential neighborhood, on a dead-end street. For the record, commercial activity is not allowed in areas that are zoned, single-family residents. Not allowed means it's illegal. I noticed that person in the room today, and I hope that the purpose of them being here is to apologize to the neighbors, the Wool Market community, that was blatantly shown disregard and disrespect on Friday. Even after being told multiple times by city leaders, "Do not have this event," the event went forward. Anything less than apology, in my opinion, is not acceptable. A residential neighborhood is never the place for over 400 complete strangers, and I was in the neighborhood, counted over 15 different tags from 15 different states. No, ma'am, it's not time for you to speak. You can do that whenever you have citizen comments. A residential neighborhood is never the place for over 400 complete strangers from over 15 states to be roaming the streets, parking in others' yards, walking down the middle of Lorraine Road into oncoming traffic and removing, refusing to remove out the way, using the bathroom in others' yards, and yes, I witnessed it while talking to one of the neighbors with their grandchild right there, playing music full of obscenities that the entire neighborhood and surrounding areas could hear, and the smell of weed so strong that you could smell it before you entered the neighborhood. I'm not sure what can be done about this particular event, but I encourage the city's legal team to pursue every possible avenue to hold this property owner responsible for their blatant disregard of the residents and the laws of this city. Throughout the day Friday, I was in the neighborhood in constant contact with Chief Miller and several of his officers, and I would like to applaud Chief Miller and his officers for the way that they handled theirselves in this situation. As it's been said throughout this meeting already, we have multiple large-scale events that take place throughout this city and along the coast. I've heard the argument from some that other events are just as bad. And for anyone with that argument, I ask you to do this, go to any officer that worked this event this weekend and ask them and see what answer you get. Ask a police officer, a fireman, or an EMT worker, and I guarantee you that they don't give you that answer. I believe that anyone who looks at this situation objectively will not come to that conclusion. I attend the block party downtown for Cruising the Coast and a couple of other events. Other than that, I stay away because the traffic is an inconvenience, especially for those who live in certain areas of the city. I attend Mardi Gras, and for half of the day on Saturday and half of the day on Tuesday, East Biloxi is gridlocked. There's some drunk people, there's some fights, and yes, some people get arrested. However, there's a difference between inconvenience and chaos. There's a difference between inconvenience and total disregard for the city, its residents, businesses, and the rule of law. I'm only one of eight of elected officials, but I'm encouraged by what I hear today. I'm personally ready to take whatever steps are necessary, pass whatever legislation is needed, and give our police chief whatever power he needs to ensure that our residents who live in certain areas aren't fearful to leave their homes, our city and businesses are protected, and our first responders are not put into unnecessary danger and in the middle of chaos. Enough is enough. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Gladon?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, Councilman Barrett, well said, very well said. Look, I don't know, I don't think everybody is wanting to hear a lot of words. I think, more importantly, you're looking for action. You're looking for action from your leadership. And I assure you, everything that I'm hearing, you're going to see that action. This isn't to target anyone or this particular event, it's to ensure the safety and well-being of our community. You know, we're, we're a community that welcomes everyone to come visit beautiful Biloxi and the beautiful Gulf Coast. But we're not a community to tolerate people's disregard for human life, property, and destruction, and our reputation as a hospitality city. And the community, the businesses, have had enough of this. And, you know, some people may think that it is unfortunate, but I think it's time. So I will support putting in measures to deter this event from coming back to the Mississippi Gulf Coast. I will do everything in my power to welcome visitors that want to come to Biloxi and enjoy our history, our food, our hotels, our people, and our hospitality. And I'm sure that is the action you will see going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gladon. Dr. Tsitsil?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand there may be some who speak during citizens' comments today from the Briarfield subdivision. I don't know for a fact that that's the case, but I understand that may be the case, so I'll try and keep my comments brief. For those of you who don't know where Briarfield subdivision is, it's equidistant between the Coliseum on Bovar Road and Edgewater Mall. There are about 70 residential units in that neighborhood. There are currently about 40 short-term rentals in that neighborhood, and another, about another 35 or 40 that are scheduled to open once construction is complete. So those are commercial enterprises, particularly for events such as this event, that sometimes prove particularly bothersome because of the parties and the number of people that gather in those short-term rentals. In this community, where the surf-style shop is on Highway 90, you've got Pine Grove that runs north and south into the neighborhood, and you have Briarfield subdivision that runs north and south into the neighborhood. That's the only way in and out of that neighborhood. And to the east of that neighborhood is Maison de Orleans. And you can exit Maison de Orleans in the north part of that neighborhood. And to the west, you have Grandview Apartments. The only way in or out to Grandview Apartments is on Grandview Drive from Highway 90. So you have a unique situation with residents there who, once the traffic picks up, whether it's gridlock or not, first responders cannot necessarily get to those residents when there's, when the traffic stacks up or if there's an issue. And I think it's evident that the entire council supports the chief, and pretty much whatever the chief needs, and I think he would tell you this, our history is, whatever he needs, he gets. The same thing with the fire department. I can't recall any request ever being turned down. But that, that being said, if you're a resident in that neighborhood and you have no options, think about that just for a minute. When the traffic picks up, people can't get to you. You can't get out. And you saw folks who live in that neighborhood that were on local media expressing their frustration. So this is where we find ourselves. But imagine living in that neighborhood. You can't get in, you can't get out, you can't go anywhere. You're hoping somebody can get to you if there's an issue. So I think there are things we could do, and I'm interested to hear what the administration has to offer after taking a closer look at all this. And I'm sure the council will be supportive, I have no doubt about that. But again, the issues I think are holding the promoters and whoever is off the grid, so to speak. Again, this social media business, this is, this is what makes this event unique. And I'm sure there are other pop-up events that are just as unique. But we've got to figure out a way to resolve that issue. I think that's at the core of all this. I won't say anything more other than to say that I know the administration and the council is just as concerned as those of you who are here today or those of you who may be watching. And we'll, we'll do a good job, I think, of working this issue and coming up with things that make a difference. And from time to time, you know, this incremental change, as Chief mentioned, you know, over the years, a little thing here develops, and we've got to deal with that. If we don't deal with these little things as they pop up cumulatively over the years, they, they lead to big issues. So this is where we find ourselves. I know we have the brain, brain power to resolve these issues, and I'm sure we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tsitsil. Mr. Demme?
Well, I had a litany of other issues to discuss, but I feel that would be in bad taste at this moment. And I don't want to harp on everything they said. I think, I think it's apparent that the council feels pretty consistent about what needs to be done. My concern is manpower. Are we going to be able to fund or obtain the manpower to put in place any actions that the chief and, and the public safety divisions feel that they need necessary to accomplish our goals? I'm hoping that we will, and, and I believe Paul said it, said it correctly, that we have a history of supporting wherever you guys need, and I think that will continue. And I'll get with you guys about the other issues after the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Demme. Ms. Newman?
Constantly, I've been asked the question, calls, text messages, emails, Facebook, where do I stand? And all I can think of is, what kind of question is that? I cannot imagine one person or leader that condones the behavior that was displayed, no regard for human life, or that something needs to be done. I just can't imagine one person. So then, God bless our first-class responders, that's all.
That's it. Okay, thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I think we've seen enough, now we have to do something. And we have to do it the right way. And I think Chief started already with the plan from Florida, the plan from Atlanta. You put these things together in City of Biloxi, and you can take care of this event. So I think that's the next thing we have to do, Mayor. You meet with the council, put these plans on the table, let's look at them, and put what we need to put together to stop the event like to ever happen in City of Biloxi again. Thank you.
I'm going to close, close the council report by saying, when I first heard this, I was troubled. I used the word unfortunate and sad. God bless our first responders. But we do have to do something. Biloxi is a place where we want to welcome everybody and equally apply the law to everybody. I encouraged the mayor, when I spoke with him earlier, to maybe looking at something like a events commission. We have a planning commission, we have a school board, we have a lot of different boards, and we have a lot of different events that goes along the coast. It may be a time to start looking at different areas, different arenas, so we can apply it across the coast. But we can't have this again, not in my Biloxi. This has been very problematic, gut-wrenching. We can't, we can't have it anymore. So Mayor, we're going to work with you to resolve this issue, we're going to get this resolved, we're going to keep Biloxi prosperous like we always had. So that concludes my comments on the council reports. Now we're going to open it up for our citizen comments. This is for our public, public agenda. We have a total of 45 minutes on the citizen comments. Each citizen is allowed three minutes per person. This is strictly enforced, three minutes per person, strictly enforced. When you hit the bell, your time is up. I'm going to ask you to come up, please sign in, give your name and address, and your time will begin. So I'm going to ask anyone to my left to come on up, to my left, to my left, 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 the left side first, still to the left. I'm going to, I'm going to alternate because we have a lot of people. I'll alternate, left, right, left, right. Yes, right there, please sign in. Right there at the desk, please, and there's a microphone right there.
Yes, I would just like to say, I live in Magnolia Ridge.
I'm going to hold on one second. You're blocking their view, I'm just, be courteous, let's be courteous, that's okay. Be courteous. All right, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I would like to say, my name is Kissy Steele, I live in Magnolia Ridge, I'm also a business owner in the community as well. I own a real estate company and a U-Haul dealership in the area. I am the one that had the party. I was not aware that it was considered as a commercial party until two days before, but he told me all the things to cut out so it wouldn't be considered as a commercial party. I did so, I did everything that he told me not to do. During the party, he told me to provide security. I had security, security, and Biloxi PD, they worked together great. The officers that he put in the area were great. When it got too full at 6:30, they shut it down. The neighborhood was clear about 7:15. I apologize to my Magnolia Ridge residents if I offended them by having such a large party. I call myself having a party to protect my nephews and sons so they won't be at the beach and be around so much of the chaos. So that was the reason why I hosted the party this year. Going forward, I will not be having any more parties of that nature. So I do apologize to my Wool Market residents.
Thank you. Please sign in, don't forget to sign in now. And we'll just start a line, that'll make it easier.
Listen, my heart goes out to the people that were shot.
Listen, my heart goes out to the people that were shot. Police officers did it. I mean, they did a wonderful job. They didn't harass anyone. I mean, they just was wonderful. But when I heard the shooting going on, people dying, I don't know if anybody died or not, but it just, it pissed me off. Because all the years I went to these events, I have custom cars and custom motorcycles, and we go out and just, people take pictures and they do things. I've been to a couple of them since 1990. I think the first one was in 1998, 90. I went to that, that was chaos because nobody knew. The police didn't even know they was coming. And then after that year, it was in between good and bad. But this right here, it was disrespectful. And I agree with some of these, these guys, these war members here, there was, all y'all was putting a good point on what was going on. But something's got to be done about it. But I saw a lot of people having a great time, minding the law, doing what they supposed to do. What do we do about them when they come back down here, want to have a good time? And then you have these, these people that was breaking the law, bringing guns. You have the good ones and you have the bad ones. Mardi Gras, you got the good ones and the bad ones. Cruising the coast, you got the good ones and the bad ones. Scraping the coast the same way. But this right here, I never seen this before with guns. So what do we do with the people that want it? They love this place. But you come to my house, you come to Biloxi, you're going to have to learn how to act when you come here. You cannot bring guns. But my heart goes out to people getting shot and people got hurt. I'm pissed at that. But I just want to know, what do we do? Do we just scratch everything, just say, oh, y'all, nobody come now? I agree with this gentleman here. He said, you come here, we allow, if you know how to act. I like that. But what do we do? We just said, nobody come? Do we just put water hoses, dogs on them now, the people that, that come down here next year? The people want it, they love this place, but some of them disrespect this place, and we can't have that. That's all I had to say, but thank you, guys. Thank you all for some of Biloxi.
Sorry.
It's okay.
First of all, I want to say thank you to all the councilmen and women and mayor and everyone else for your efforts of being willing to meet. I think it's important for everyone to have a discussion because that's when you can find resolve. It's when people stop talking that we have more issues. My name is Justin Smith. I am a resident of Pine Grove Avenue, which is about a football field and a half away from the most horrific acts of what we've seen this weekend. April 15th, I brought my newborn son home. He was not even three days old, and we drove past the neighborhood excited to enjoy our new little baby. And within a few hours of being home, we were hearing what sounded to be explosions or gunfire. Called emergency services and tried to argue with me that it was just fireworks. I'm former law enforcement. I know the difference between a firework and not, and I explained as such. However, they gave me the consolation that it was indeed fireworks, and then come out, find out the next morning if someone had been murdered in that same location. The next day, I had several people who were drag racing up and down my street, exceeding two, three, four times the speed limit. If you've ever been down Pine Grove or next to either side of those roads, they are very, very narrow. And due to the high need, we were unable to get the police assistance at the edge of our street that we had had two days prior of what was allowed into our neighborhood as opposed to what was not. I think a large thing that makes a difference is that a neighborhood is a community. A neighborhood is a place where families go to be, have sanctuary and safety. And a venue is someplace that people gather for an event. The unfortunate thing about this weekend is that there was no venue. It was my neighborhood, and it was my family's safety. I had young women running from, for suicide, saying, someone so pulled a gun, and this amount, and they're laughing while on the phone, and I'm trying to exit. I had to evacuate my newborn baby, my five-year-old son, my mother, and my wife in the middle of the chaos. I went to go down the other road, and as I'm doing that, we're having to reverse and speed away because there's police officers with shields and machine guns trying to deter the traffic. And we'd go down another road, and it's the same thing you had brought up, how there's only one way in and one way out. And when you're stuck in the middle of that and all that chaos, it's very hopeless to be able to feel like you can defend your family. There has to be resolve, there has to be a venue. I don't want to have to tell my five-year-old to get in a floorboard ever again for his safety while they're screaming fear. Thank you.
My name is Rene Horvath.
I live in Gulfport, Mississippi. And on Friday, I had seen the, an outstanding show of police. My guests would have been Ocean Springs, as far and wide as they could come, all, all vehicles, motorcycles. It, it was impressive, and I was thankful to see that. I took a seat in the sun at Felix's, and within the time I had my meal, there were four arrests, people, you know, chasing, you know, racing against each other. I think, I appreciate what the council has said, specifically Ms. Newman with the accountability and the officer expressing that we have possibly not even as many officers to show because of the situation that they were put into. And I like to keep everything simple. Personally, if, if we cannot find enough officers to cover our safety for any event, I think they're going to have to be, we're going to have to come back on allowing those things to happen. I would hate to see that, but it seems very simple. If we can't cover it safety-wise, then we can't, we can't perform on a level of success. And thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, council, mayor. My name is Maurice Bryant. I am a promoter here. I've been promoting for, this would be the 13th year for what was, we consider Black Beach Weekend. I've always said this event is unique rather, other than any other comparison on any other event. I've always said that when someone tries to compare it to cruising the coast, scraping, it's different. I know that. However, and first off and foremost, I will say this. I've spoke with Captain Everett. He was my point of contact with Biloxi PD. And I have, I advised them on every event that I had. I specifically called, I wanted to speak to the chief, and I was appointed Captain Everett. Never has anyone from the council, and I do believe everyone knows who I am. I am upfront. I let everyone know what's going on. Every event I have, safety is utmost concern. I don't host beach parties. I don't have a lot on the beach. I've worked with Matt McDonald at the Mississippi Coliseum. I've held events there 13 years. We've never had an incident at one of my events. What I will say, this was completely, and my phone was ringing off the hook Sunday afternoon. People asking me, was I okay? Unacceptable, unacceptable. I do believe there's things that could be done to minimize that. I've never been asked, what do you think can be done? I would love to be in that conversation. One thing I will say is, all the officers did a wonderful job. They responded to any event that I, that I had, one event Saturday afternoon or Saturday evening. The officers were there, they responded in force, they dispelled a crowd, they did their For any event that caused any kind of issues in anyone's community that I personally had anything to do with, I apologize. I do not, actually, to be honest with you, if you, if you look at the events that we post, I do not promote anything that's not organized. I don't promote beach, beach events. I, I don't post the party on the beach. I don't do any of that. So I don't like being grouped with promoters that are not organized. That's my, that's my issue. It's not everyone. To be honest with you, I wanted to know who was here. I've been to meetings before. I'll show up again. I'm probably going to be the only one. No one, if they're not responsible, find a way, I'll help, let's move them out of the way. It's not about money, it's not about any of that, because I heard, oh, it's about financial gain. It is not.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Hi, my name is Bob Hudson. I'm a newcomer to Biloxi. I live in Ward 1. I moved from Atlanta and to get closer to family here. And I bought a significant investment in a new home out on the beach. I also bought a one-acre beachfront property I planned to build my dream home on. Now I'm having second thoughts after what I experienced this weekend. Absolute atrocity. 70 mile an hour down Jeff Davis, that's object, that's an objective number. People stopping on my property, publicly urinating all over it, and then laughing at us as we're on the deck at 9:30 at night. Felt threatened in my own home. Unbelievable. And I'm having second thoughts about building my dream home here, to be honest. But I wanted to bring a new perspective here to this thing. I'm kind of a data scientist, and I started my consulting company many, many years ago, and I'm extremely successful with it. I think we need an objective look, Mr. Mayor, at, at the statistics of the cost versus benefit of these events. Biloxi, I just found that the latest statistics I can find, don't hold me to these statistics, but these, these are pretty close, I think. But as we compare to the United States, City of Biloxi is 2 to 1 overall crime rate, 2 to 1. So why would we want events here that are going to exacerbate that? I read in the newspaper article, Chief Miller, 669 calls. Well, if you do the math, we have about 49,000 people in Biloxi, if I'm right? And if you look at the statistics of that, that's, that means we'd have about 5,000, maybe just south of 5,000 crimes a year. And look how many calls that was, 669. But what didn't you see? What didn't we get calls on? All the things I saw didn't call you. There are all thousands of things going on at these events that are unreported. When you look at the impact, I just did the dirty math on this, 14% give or take impact on our crime rate for one event. I don't know if anybody's looked at it from an objective lens or not, right? But that's ridiculous. When you start seeing those kind of numbers, it doesn't work. I was here for cruising, people as nice as they can be. I didn't have this problem. They weren't urinating on my property. They respected, and the police are great. I mean, the police are fabulous, Chief. I mean, fabulous. I've talked to a number of the officers here, even during the storms and all, great people. And, and they worked their ass off, and, you know, and they did a hell of a job on Sunny, thank God. But I, I'd ask the council, and I, I want to echo Mrs. Newman's comments about being specific about what you want to do, right? We need something very specific. Stop the permits, shut them down. We don't need this anymore here. Do something specific that shuts this thing down.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson.
My name is Joanna Clark. I recently moved from sunny California, Los Angeles, here in Gulfport. It was a fiasco in my neighborhood. I'm all for a good party, but when traffic is stopped, people are running, and I got a little nervous. If one, I wasn't sure if they were holding their pants or holding their weapon. Had they come up to me, I already had in my mind, I'm going to have to just keep going. I love me. Then in my neighborhood, because I'm walking distance to the beach, they were speeding through my neighborhood. We have kids in my neighborhood. Like I said, I'm all for a good party, but it has to be some kind of order. That's all I have to say, and not in the neighborhoods. And I appreciate your time, but I did not leave California to come back to something. I could have stayed there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Good afternoon. Luanne Pampas, CEO of Scarlet Pearl Casino Resort in DeIbraville, and more importantly, a resident of Biloxi. The one thing I continue to hear is its problem. What I keep hearing, and my hat's off and hearts to Chief Miller, it is impossible for any one person to solve this. We must get some type of committee, some type of advisory board together. I don't know what the outcome of that will be, but what I do know is not one person can be responsible. We all have the right to feel safe. I am very passionate about this because at my age and all the years in the business, I've lived in Atlantic City, I've lived in New Jersey, and I'm thankful I live in Biloxi. But the one thing that I can tell you is we all have the right to feel safe. And I, for one, spend a lot of time figuring out how to promote things that are good for the entire community, and I think any of you that know me know that. Hence the movie that's being filmed. I don't want to burst everyone's bubble, but all that good is gone when things like this happen. No one should condone gun violence, but we all need to recognize it's happening everywhere. But I'm begging everyone, please put together, somebody from tourism, people from the casinos, people from the hotel motel association. You don't have the year that you think you have because the years fly by fast. I'm willing to offer to help do that. Do I believe we should have the event? I don't think we've exhausted all of the things that we do. When you look at Mardi Gras and when you look at cruising the coast, there's one board, there's one group of people responsible. And if we can't have that with spring break, then no, we shouldn't have it. But I do think we need to exhaust all options. But I, for one, can tell you, it negates everything that we do to promote the Gulf Coast that has suffered enough. Thank you.
My name is Sandra. I live in the greater Biloxi area, if anybody knows where that's at. I was one of them phone calls that the police couldn't get around to because I was told point-blank that they did not have the resources. I was very upset at the people in my neighborhood. They were coming through, now look, it's not like I don't hear a gunshot every so often in my neighborhood, I do. But that night was a little nice, and the thumping was shaking my windows. My neighbor, I was watching her dogs, she's my cousin, her dogs have epilepsy, they have seizures. And because of that night, there was shit all over the kitchen that I had to clean up because these dogs were having seizures all night because of the thump, thump, thump in my neighborhood. I called and asked the logist to drive through. They did not have a vehicle, not one vehicle, just to make a drive-through. I wasn't asking for an arrest. I hibernate during these events. I hibernate during every big event in Biloxi because I'm disabled and this crowd scared the shit out of me. So I'm not really happy that nobody was available to drive through my neighborhood and stop this thumping, and I had to clean up all that dog shit, okay? I'm really not happy about that. These dogs can die from this. Other people can die from this. There's kids in my neighborhood, everybody's in there. I want this event banned. I'm really not appreciative of this. I think if the city can... I think if the city cannot police this, they need to tell these people, go. You want to hold somebody responsible? Oh, I can tell you who to hold responsible. You go to Facebook. You can find the pages on Facebook because I did. And you snatch them people up on Facebook and you hold them responsible for this, and you make them pay for this event. Do you know if they had to pay for this event, they would not be doing this. And I don't know why y'all are not holding these people accountable. Why everybody's looking at the city and they're looking at everybody else? Why? We're not the ones that did this, okay? These people that set this up on Facebook, funny thing. Facebook can do all kinds of crap, but they can't stop this just like they can't stop the other illegal stuff that they allow. I don't appreciate this at all. I don't appreciate being scared in my own home. I don't appreciate being so scared I can't go next door. Check on them dogs that are having seizures because of the noise and the cars running up and down my neighborhood. I don't appreciate. I didn't call 911. I called dispatch and dispatch told me point blank, there were no officers available to make any runs to anywhere. They didn't care what was happening. They did not have the manpower because they were somewhere else. What's wrong with this picture? You want to hold somebody accountable? Who set it up? Grab them. Hold them accountable. Sue the hell out of them. Make somebody besides the residents of this city pay for this. As far as I'm concerned, the residents of this city have paid for this. We paid for this through our taxes. We paid for this through our property taxes, through our sales taxes, through everything else. These other events, I don't have problems with. I don't understand it.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to change the topic for a little bit. But I too live on one of those streets that is a dead end. So my heart goes out to all the people in the... It was a travesty. But I'm Janet Phillips, and my husband and I have owned property and been a resident on Oakmont Place the last 23 years. I'm here as a property owner and a representative with the other neighbors to request the rezoning of Oakmont Place from RS10 to CB zoning to be approved. I'm here to answer any questions you might have regarding this proposal. At one time, there were 28 homes on our street. One home was taken down after Katrina and was purchased as part of the hotel by, when the Coliseum purchased all of that property for the new parking facility. That one lot is already zoned CB. To the east of us is CB, to the south of us is CB, and then we have parking facilities on the north. Now then, there's 14 houses that remain on the street. The Miracle Street, which it has been called for many years, has survived hurricanes, storms, traffic jams, loud noise, late night noise, issues with the Coliseum, and even spring break. But it will not survive progress. The neighborhood has been sacrificed for the much-needed Pops Ferry extension. From the project design, the city has taken all the property that is needed for the extension, as we were told by the city engineer. Four properties remain on the north end and will be divided from the neighborhood by the new road that will go directly into the Coliseum. As Mr. Tadaro from the Planning Commission said at the planning meeting, quote, "This is a textbook example of the change in the character of the neighborhood." Not over 10 or 15 years, but this has happened over the last five years. The neighborhood is unrecognizable as a neighborhood. So by definition, it wasn't a mistake in the original zoning. Now it is a change in the neighborhood. I can't even imagine how anything can be more changed than this," unquote. Let the record reflect, this was a unanimous decision by the Planning Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning of the Oakmont to CB. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Hello. I will say hi while I'm signing myself in. How's everybody doing? How are you? Mr. Felix? Ms. Dixie? Kenny? Recreation Board? I will say this. Dr. Tisdale, hi. You start running again. Need to run. I will say this. The issue comes down, at the end of the day, that Mardi Gras happens. Kenny, you're in a whole different ward. So are you, Nathan. However, I live here in this ward where floats hop up and they throw their trash over their side in my neighborhood, and nothing is said about it. We don't say anything about it. Ninety is a thoroughfare from Gulfport, Ocean Springs, all the way through. However, we deal with the most of it, and that's true. But we hear people now upset about what happens when it's on a thoroughfare. What happens in your neighborhood? I hear people talking about, well, my neighborhood, I can't do this, I can't do that. Do you know how hard it is on a race day? A race day, when stuff is going on downtown on this block, and you have to show your ID to get to your house? We never say anything about that. That has never been a concern. We don't speak about that. We let it go. At this point in time, it becomes... What I can remember is, this is the first time there's been an issue about gun violence. This is just not our issue. This is a nation issue. If we are to be a tourism city, county, we have to take those things into our consideration. We can't control. How did you stop spring break? You going to tell the colleges, no spring break this time? They can't come down. How do you do that? Do you stop that? Or do you guys have the power to say, you can't do spring break at this time? Yes, there are things that are planned, but what's this weekend? Right now, at the Coliseum, they're setting up for the crawfish fest. What happens at that point? Can you tell me that there will not be anything that happens? You can't. And we're looking at that isolated event that happened. However, in my neighborhood, I know that every February, March, or whatever, Mardi Gras is coming. It's going to come. I have had people park in my yard, and they get mad at me. It's my yard. It's my yard. I can't park here. However, if it's on the other side of town or in other locations, nobody says anything. And the people that live in those other locations come over to this side of town and do that. Park where they want to, do what they want to.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Your time is up. We appreciate you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alita Barnes. I live at 383 Magnolia Street in Biloxi, Ward 2. I have witnessed Black Spring Break, Mardi Gras, cruising the coast, fishing rodeos, and what have you for 53 years that I have lived in Ward 2 of Biloxi. I came here in 1970. I taught school at Biloxi High School and at DeIbraville High School for 36 years. We have branded ourselves as a tourist town where all are welcome. And now you tell me you want to ban a tourist group? I believe I heard someone say there was 30,000 people here this weekend. Out of the 30,000, maybe 100 got in trouble or started trouble. So what do you do? Do you throw out the baby with the bathwater? I heard one lady say that we need to form a group. With that, I agree. We need a group, a commission, a committee, an advisory, a whomever, mayor, to come to the table and work out what it is that we need to do to put in place to assure that all are welcome to the city of Biloxi and that all groups will be treated equally and fairly in this tourist town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Good afternoon. How y'all doing? My name's Jonathan Foster. I live on Pine Grove Avenue, a block and a half off the beach. Saturday night, when all this shit was going on, me and my wife was getting home. We passed up the Waffle House, and we was in that craziness there. We heard the shots. People were running from the beach up towards Waffle House. It was just insane. We couldn't get into Pine Grove, so we went over to Briarfield. It was an aggravation getting in there with all the people keep walking in front of the vehicle. Not a care in the world. We get up Briarfield. We finally get home. We finally get home, and about 20 minutes later is when that guy was shot on Briarfield or wherever that was. Then we heard about the shooting. It was that Sunday night. I think after the concert they had there, there was a bunch of traffic going down the road because the Coliseum lets the gate open to let the traffic out, but we can't use the Coliseum to get to our homes. When you're having an event, that should always be open if the road's blocked because all the traffic, cruising, scraping, Black Spring Break, whatever you want to call it these days. The Coliseum should always be open for the neighborhood to get home. Also, all the garbage from that empty lot where all the party was across from the souvenir store there. Surf style. Anyway, they picked up all the garbage, which looked disgusting. Monday morning, I had physical therapy. It looked disgusting. They were picking it up though. But now, there's still garbage that blew over into Surf Style's parking lot. Now they have to pick it up. I'm guessing they're not. I don't know. But now the wind's blowing. There's more garbage over in that empty lot. So I think the city should come back behind them and pick up all that garbage that was not picked up.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Your time is up. Okay. Excellent line. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Beverly Martin. I'm here as a resident. I'm also a supervisor. Supervisor Ladner's here, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. I'm speaking on behalf of Beverly. First and foremost, thank you, Chief, for a great job that you did. I wish I had just an ounce of his patience. Trust me, I want to use shit just like the other lady did, but you know, trying to be nice. But that's, you know, I wish I could be more like Chief Miller. But I do want to say that if you do form some kind of board or commission, I am volunteering now to serve on it. I have some experience as a founding board member with Cruising the Coast, and I got tourism, years and years' experience in tourism. But I can tell you, I'm open for suggestions. I don't know how to solve this. I really don't. It's not like we can close the beach two days out of the month or the year. I mean, it's got to be more of a cohesive effort to pull this thing together, similar to Cruising the Coast. With Cruising, you've got one board, one face, which is Woody, of course, but to work with. And he spends all of his time, and the rest of his board goes from state line to state line. They've got 13 sites, and they're very, very organized and controlled. So I just wanted to offer my services, and I really want to say thank you to the chief and the sheriff, the deputies who are out there. We had law enforcement, I believe, from all over the state. And I want to thank Chuck Loftus and the San Beach Department because they're going to be working overtime. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly. And if I hadn't said it already, thank all of our elected officials for coming out, showing your support.
Hi. My name is Margaret Stafford. I'm a Realtor here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. So the concept of quiet enjoyment of your home, your home being your sanctuary, your home being where you feel peaceful and safe, is extremely important to me, and I've built my entire career around it. So for people to be in an area and feel like they are having to take a newborn out of it and fleeing for what they really genuinely feel is their safety is heartbreaking to me. I'm also going to say that I chose to buy a property on Howard Avenue in Biloxi because I wanted to be in the heart of things. I made a deliberate choice to be on the parade route. So I just wanted to point out the differences between the inconveniences, and they are real, and the mess, and it is true, of living on a parade route and comparing Mardi Gras to this event. The Mardi Gras parades all have sponsors. There are specific groups who are throwing these events, whether it's the crawfish festival, any festival, or a Mardi Gras parade. They have an accountability. There is a budget made, and they contribute to the budget by bringing money into the community. The difference between this event is there was one promoter that was an official promoter, and the other ones were just people who came out of the ether and started a party and had it, and there's no accountability for those people. So if I said, well, there's a Mardi Gras parade, so I'm going to throw a Margaret parade, and I'm going to run it down Howard Avenue, and I'm not going to speak to the city about it, I can't do that. So for a legitimate promoter who wants to come in, like the gentleman who was here speaking earlier, I feel bad for him because he does everything the right way. And then these other people come in, and you know, they are muddying the waters and making his situation very difficult. So, you know, maybe that's the answer. These events that are being created that are not registered, or they do try to register, and then they're told by the city, no, and they haven't anyway, just shut those down immediately. If it's not a real sanctioned, registered event, it shouldn't happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have about six more minutes, probably two more people.
It'll be fast. Good day. My name's April Stewart, and I'm here representing law enforcement wives, first responders' wives, mothers, families. I'm also here, I wanted to send a message from the officer who was injured. His wife and I are very good friends. She had two comments. One was, is it worth it? And now she's got some hope that there's some unity. I've been informing her on some of the comments that have been made, and she wants to express her gratitude and thanks. And I want to thank Chief Miller and all the officers. This is our family. And he always looks out for us. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Linda Hornsby. I'm a resident of Biloxi, lifelong resident. And also, I'm executive director of the Mississippi... And also, I'm Executive Director of the Mississippi Hotel and Lodging Association. I want to be very brief, but I'll share our economic impact stats with everyone once they start making decisions. But within a six-hour time yesterday, I was asked to, what was the economic impact as far as the hotels? And so within a six, I sent out a mass email and within six hours, I received all of these responses. Some of them, each one of those is one page representing either one to six hotels each. And there was not any positivity. It was a very costly event even to prepare for. As far as security, it was costly afterwards. Year over year, occupancy declined, revenue declined, in some cases, 40%. We are a weekend destination and so on weekends, even this time of the year, we've run between 90 and 100% occupancy depending on the property. Some of the properties were in 40%. Everybody suffers because the hotels not only pay sales tax, they pay a 5% room tax that they collect from the guests. And so all the funding that that goes to is diminished whenever the occupancy is low. I will tell you that there were many, many comments about declined credit cards and then they couldn't resell the rooms or they tried to resell the rooms and lots of cancellations. I have to attribute some of that to the weather. You know, the weather probably did result in people canceling. But once they do that at the last minute, you know, it's tough to resell that room. So just wanted to let you know, we'll be glad to share these stats, not proprietary information, but an aggregate economic impact. And just wanted to say that on behalf of the hotel industry. And we'll be glad to sit at the table with anybody and come up with a solution. Thank you.
Okay, we have time for one more, one more.
Good afternoon. Hey, real quick, I am gonna say I'm here on behalf of myself, Representative Jeffrey Holm III. One thing I want everybody to understand before y'all make this decision. Yes, y'all gotta care for the safety and well-being of all citizens in the city of Biloxi, people on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, also the tourism. The state of Mississippi just had put $30 million into promote Mississippi outside of the state of Mississippi. The representatives, the senators and the state representatives from the city of Biloxi have been up and beyond to bring money to encourage and encourage people to come to the city of Biloxi. So make sure, whatever decision y'all make, y'all isolate one set group of people. We have an outstanding law enforcement community, not only on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, the city of Biloxi, but also the state of Mississippi, along with our federal partners. Y'all utilize those law enforcement communities to hold the people who create that infraction at bay. I see one of my fellow leaders up there, Felix Gans. In the military, we take this isolated and calculated risk of 10%. The ones who create that infraction should be held accountable, but do not punish the other ones who came in dead was right. Yes, the fine of our hotels probably was there. There's a lot of factors went into it. So do not hold all of them accountable for what an isolated group of people did. Again, man, I thank you for everything you're doing to get ahead of this thing. Let's be proactive, establish a board and make sure Biloxi is moving forward and continue to move forward. Because we know the historical death of people not being able to go on the beach. And this would be similar if you forced people not to come here on the grounds of the name. So many people got a bad vote. We were not inclusive. Subliminally, they went back to the old Mississippi, say these people, those people, that people. That's a dog whistle. We're better than that. We're moving Mississippi forward. We're moving the coast forward. We're the most diverse on the state and in the state of Mississippi. Forty-seven percent of the state economy comes from the Gulf Coast and that's by way of tourism. So please, I'm asking you all, before y'all make that statement and before you make the decision to cancel this thing, make sure y'all get people who are part of this community, for this community on good and both sides, good or bad, let them come to the table. Then y'all make a decision collectively. Do not punish a group of people for what a selective group did. Chief, my word goes out to your officer and any officer and the people who got injured. But also remember this, if not least, we're a constitutional state. That means guns run rampant through the state of Mississippi. I'm not gonna talk about the, I'm talking about the state of Mississippi. And that's learned behavior, those individual behaviors. And let's punish that, not the group of individuals. Y'all have a great day.
Okay, Dr., you got one minute. We got one minute left. I'm gonna give you a chance to talk for one minute. One minute. One minute left. Come on up there.
Well, I don't have much to say, but if you listen, it's real powerful. Biloxi is like anywhere else. It works only like your car do, your vehicle do, negative and positive. So don't get it twisted. I've been in, I've been go pour in Biloxi sixty-some years. Ever since I've been here, it works negative and positive. So don't get caught up in things. Positive and positive works. Negative and positive work. Bad and the good, and sometimes they're ugly. That's what I have seen in Biloxi all of my life. So you leaders don't get caught up in right, and right makes right. So you gonna have the negative and the positive. Mardi Gras have it. All of us have it. And everything else gets caught up in it. You know? And all of them that don't know me, you think about it, I know you too. And the Chief. Remember, it works negative and positive, Biloxi. For Biloxi to work, it must, and that's a must, it must rock and roll. But a half and two for the only rock. But if you stick that other half together, it'll fold. So don't get caught up in this, or some people don't know this, they haven't got the level of understanding. And so the U leaders, y'all remember that. Biloxi works negative and positive, just go pour it. I've been saying that for 60 years. Right and wrong makes right, like it or not. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and close it. We're gonna close it out. Thank you, guys. That concludes our public agenda. We appreciate all the comments. We appreciate all of you guys coming out, participating and adding your comments. And your comments are duly, duly noted. Okay, we're gonna move on to our policy agenda. We're gonna start with our policy agenda and on number four, ordinance A. Carrie, Ms. Carrie?
Ordinance to approve a map text amendment to the land development ordinance to add a short-term rental overlay district.
That was moved by Mr. Barrett, seconded by Mr. Glavin. Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, I make a motion to table that.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any questions?
Subject call.
Subject call. All in favor? All right, let's move on to number P. Ordinance B. First reading? Carrie?
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for several parcels of land on Oakmont Place from RS 10, low-density, single-family residential to community business.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is second reading. That was moved by Mr. Glavin, seconded by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Glavin?
I'm gonna go ahead and refer this to the councilman in this ward, which is Mr. Tisdale.
Dr. Tisdale?
Thank you, Mr. Glavin. I would appreciate the support of all my colleagues up here to support this measure. It's Ms. Phillips who spoke earlier. And I can't remember, I know, I'm just thinking Shouse because I knew your mother had spoken earlier. This is, as I said, a textbook case of a change in the character of the neighborhood. These are all the residential lots along Oakmont that are currently owned privately. So I'd appreciate your support on this measure. Thank you.
Is there any other council member who want to speak on it? I'm gonna call for the question. All in favor? Okay, seven zero, motion carries. Okay, resolution C?
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize an outdoor storage.
Hold on, Carrie. Hold on one second. You guys mind closing the back door for us, please?
You gotta close that one first.
Excuse me, you guys in the back? You guys in the back, if you want to go ahead and outside, we're still in the middle of a meeting. Okay, Ms. Carrie?
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize an outdoor storage facility, including a variance to allow limestone parking material for 11811 Old Highway 67.
I'll make a motion to deny. I'll second that.
Moved by Mr. Glavin, seconded by Mr. Barrett to deny. Any questions?
I'll, well, I'm gonna make some comments and I'll allow Mr. Creel to chime in. A little bit, and I'll give my summary of the history and Mr. Creel can, you know, elaborate on it. This property requested a zoning change some time ago and the zoning change was granted. And after the zoning change, a letter was sent to the owner requiring him to go to the DRC, which he never did. There was some activity on the land without the proper permits. Code enforcement went out there to try to advise the owner. He was, code enforcement was ran off the property. There were warrants issued for cease and desist and those were ignored. Eventually, the owner was arrested and went before a judge. The judge suggested that he go back to planning, which he did, and request a conditional use to do something else with the property. Planning Commission approved it and now it sits before us. I have problems with it because the zoning was approved for the owner to do a certain thing and he failed to do it and he failed to follow proper procedure. So I believe we ought to deny this request, have the owner go to DRC like he originally was supposed to and submit plans for developing the property like he intended originally and how, when this body supported that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Creel.
Well, you covered most of it. We believe that the first, the initial visit to DRC, when it was presented that it was going to be a construction office and drawings were shown to the DRC, that's typically what a developer will do, is come in with a, you know, just a conceptual drawing of what they want to do because all they're asking for at that point is a zoning change. But once it goes to Planning Commission and then to City Council, the letter goes out telling them that they have to come back to DRC and that's when they have that reassurance that their zoning is correct so they can go hire an engineer to put the civil drawing together that shows the drainage and the parking and the building location and the landscaping and everything else that goes in. It seems to be clear that this drawing was presented just to get approval and once the zoning was approved by the City Council, the owner went out, put up a fence and went to work. He has no business license on this property, doesn't have any certificate of occupancy because there's no building on there to issue a certificate of occupancy to. By his own admission, he's brought in field dirt. There's no protective barriers put in there to protect the land and the water that's around this, you know, from the drainage going in, you know? There's supposed to be certain things that would have all been addressed at DRC had it gone to DRC. So it's taken five years to get to this point of, you know, kind of bringing this to a head. The issue, I would go back to the issue. What happened is, is that when this was in court, the attorney for our side and the attorney for the property owner got together and asked what else can be done. And one of the options, one of the options was, well, since he's using it for open storage and open storage is allowed as a conditional use in RB, then, you know, one option would be to go back through the process and ask for, ask for open storage approval, which is what he did and he's here now. So it's up to the council. We, we just feel like that the zoning change was kind of granted in bad faith based on drawings that were presented that never materialized.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll make a real quick statement. When all this started, this was in my ward before it was, before we redrew ward lines. And from day one, Mr. Lee has proven time and time again, he's not gonna follow the rules when it comes to this. I meant, it's been an ongoing problem. We have a list three to four pages long of violations and for a couple of years, he basically refused to even respond to those violations. And so I'm a no and I ask the council to support on this.
Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah. Jerry, and sometimes this creates confusion. My experience is things will go before the DRC and then they'll come to the Planning Commission and might be recommended for approval by the Planning Commission with the understanding that sometimes you have to go back and get clearance through DRC. So I think sometimes just the fact that it's, these things can be done concurrently rather than consecutively may create some issues sometimes. Doesn't happen often, but sometimes it happens. When somebody, in this instance, after the Planning Commission where it's noted that, Mr. Developer, you've got to go back to the DRC, I know that you notify, my experience is, you're good about notifying that developer with a letter. Is that letter sent registered or certified mail or should we begin doing that? Because some folks, their addresses change, their address may change, for whatever reason. I, remember, my background's just, we wanted to notify somebody in a previous career. We typically did that with registered letters. I don't know, do y'all, how do y'all handle that? Is it just a letter from your office or is it registered mail?
Well, number one, when, when the only thing that's being requested is a zoning change, you know, the DRC has limited input. You know, all you're asking for is a zoning change at this point and we know that you're gonna come back. So they're notified at the meeting that they're gonna have to come back. Then in addition to that, we send a letter out. We have not been sending it certified, but we did send a lot of the notices through the court process here certified. Those, those were not honored. You know, there was no response to those. But, you know, if the, if the City Council feels that we need to start sending out those notices, most people just comply. They understand that, you know, we go through the zoning change process first and they understand that they're gonna come back to DRC. They just, they don't want to spend the money on civil drawings until they have the confidence of knowing that they have the zoning in place to accomplish the development.
Okay, thank you.
Listen, Mr. Lee, so Mr. Robert E. Lee is in the back. If you want to come up and say some, some words, I think we need to extend that courtesy to you. By all means.
Just go ahead, go ahead. They brought you up, just to speak.
Mr. Lee, if you don't mind, just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Robert E. Lee. My address is 12027 Motzy Circle. Y'all might want to make a note of that so you can mail things to the right address. Number one, what Mr. Barrett said a while ago, I take complete exception with. You couldn't stand further from the truth. Anytime I've received something, I have responded to it. If I don't receive it, I don't know it. I wouldn't be here today if I depended on the city to tell me that this was on the agenda. I called three times before I found out I was on the agenda today. That's how your process works. So before you accuse me of being an outlaw, you might want to do a little bit of background on that. Okay? Number one, and I'm addressing you specifically because you made the accusation specifically. When Mr. Creel made a statement, which was totally false, why would I change from agricultural with a low tax rate to commercial with a high tax rate? Because I'm stupid? Because that's the inference? I did it just to get a change of, of higher taxes? That makes zero sense. We bought the property with the intent of putting a construction site in. Like everybody else, we face ups and downs in our economy. There's not a whole lot I can do about that. I don't have an extra quarter of a million dollars laying around just to go throw up a building. So there was nothing, to my knowledge, that I had to do with anybody other than wait until I could afford to put up a building. Then I would go through the process of submitting plans and the whole nine yards. Nobody told me I had to do anything before that, or I have no notice of anything. I understand Mr. Creel has sent a letter to some address, and it was addressed to me. I did not receive that. Had I received that, I'd happily go and sit before that group and explain to them that I had no plans at that time. The work that he said I've gone through was clearing some trees. We put some fill in there because when you take out giant trees like water oaks, which was completely legal to do, then you got to fill it in some way. We have no runoff. When we sat before that Planning Commission, we said we would leave an easement of 50 feet completely around the property. So we didn't encroach on anybody else's privacy. That we didn't make any noise, we didn't throw dust on them. We've done absolutely every bit of what we said we would do. So you guys are putting out the wrong words. I understand you can vote how you want, and I understand you have that power to do that. But you vote on facts, not on your perceptions of who I am, because that's all BS. We have, we have followed it when he says we didn't comply with the court? What kind of nonsense is that? If I get something, we'd certainly comply with the court. I had an attorney so we could comply with everything. And we negotiated with the city in good faith. My attorney did. Obviously, the city wasn't intended to be faithful because otherwise, they want to come here and propose that after I spend the money for an attorney that, oh, let's not, let's not approve it. It was the city's attorney and my attorney that negotiated that, not me. I don't think it's, it's fair for you guys to paint the picture that you painted based on whatever ulterior motive you have. Because I assure you, I am not the criminal you just made me out to be. We have tried to comply. I'll give you a prime example. If you read what it says and what they proposed, I'm supposed to go to this, what do you call it, DRC? Is that what it's called? DRC?
Yes, sir.
It says right here that I'm supposed to immediately go to the DRC. Was I supposed to go already? Why would I go to the DRC when it's got to come before you? But the way it's written, I was supposed to already be at the DRC again. The proposed way that you guys run this thing out of the Planning Council doesn't make sense. So it's impossible for an ordinary citizen to follow the rules when the rules don't appear to make sense at all. I'm supposed to go put a plan before you guys approve whether or not I should have a plan? That makes no sense. But yet, that's what the official recommendation is from the Planning Council. That's just not right. And that's what confuses the issue. Again, we've complied with everything that we thought we were supposed to do. We went before the Planning Commission. We had the Sierra Club there. We did everything and have continued to do everything. The only thing we did was we put up a fence across the front of the place because, oh, I don't know, I got tired of losing $10,000 a month in thievery because for whatever reason, nobody can stop the thievery out there. I lost a dump truck. We're not talking about somebody coming in and stealing a drill. He stole my dump truck off the place. Yes, I put a fence across it with a gate. And what we asked for, when we asked for the variance, this isn't public access. I'm not asking for parking for public. I'm talking about parking my equipment on gravel. We put concrete down because I knew running in and out of there, we didn't want to track mud onto the highway. I'm a commercial builder. We tried to do it the right way. You guys are holding me accountable because I didn't follow a process that's very unclear. And again, because I don't get notified of it? Because you send a letter through the mail to my ex-wife? I'm supposed to all of a sudden know what I'm supposed to be doing? It's just not right. It's not fair. And what you guys doing and what you recommended, Kenny Glavin, is wrong. Any questions for me? I'll be happy to answer directly.
I got a comment, Mr. Lee. All we're saying is we're denying this conditional use. We're going to put it back to the original document that requires you to go to DRC. Now that you know, shouldn't be a problem. Go to DRC, submit your plans, and move forward with the original intent for that property.
Mr. Glavin, the problem that you have there is what you're disapproving had me going to the DRC and using it for outside storage where my equipment sits. Just not having a building there or a big commercial building. Then, again, the attorney for the city and my attorney agreed, hey, you can put up a small building there. You do that, we're all good with it. But what you're saying is you're not good with it. So I don't know what your personal interest is when the city attorney and, and my attorney all sits there and goes, here's the way we can do this. You can have a building, it just doesn't have to be a big construction building. So that means I don't have to have all of that because I can't afford it right now. That's just not right. I appreciate it.
Okay, is there anyone else with any comment?
Let me just respond to a couple of things. The notice was sent on June the 15th, 2018, which was right after the council passed the zoning change. And it was sent to 12048 Motzy Circle, which was the address on the application. As far as the negotiations go, what happened between their attorney and our attorney is that their attorney told our attorney that here's what I'll do. If y'all push this forward, I'll just file an appeal and we'll get it tied up for two years in court. Well, and he'll continue to operate this business up on 67. That's what we were faced with. So that's why the option was put out there. Well, since you're using it for open storage, why don't you just apply for open storage, you know, as a conditional use? And let's see where that goes. So everything that was done was done correctly. And when, and when our code enforcement officer tried to go out to the site and notify them that they were operating without the proper business licenses and everything, he was run off the property. So you've got the complete timeline in your file.
Hello?
I have a question. Has there ever been an issue? He just, Mr. Lee just stated that there's been no runoff of the property or anything like that. Have we ever had an issue with runoff on that property?
We did get a complaint about runoff. There's a, if you'll notice in your timeline, there was an issue there about drainage. And then he called in and told somebody that it had been corrected. Our stormwater guy responded to that, Tony Bishop. You'll see that listed in that timeline there. But we don't, we don't know. Because, see, one of the things about DRC is that when a developer's getting ready to develop a piece of property, they come in with their site plan and their engineer has shown that their after-development runoff is not going to exceed their pre-development runoff. That's one of the things that we rely on, their engineer, to provide us the information. But because they never came back to DRC, we never got that information.
I just remember getting a call whenever we had a really heavy rain one time.
Mm-hmm.
And you could look as far as you could see in either direction from that property. And there was a pipe coming out the front of the property. And the ditch, maybe a couple of foot of water, and it was completely red from the runoff from a catch basin that was in the middle of all that red dirt with a pipe coming out the end.
That's correct.
If I remember correctly, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, because this has been several years ago, that was addressed. And the way that it was addressed is they put a rag or something over the end of that pipe to try to keep the red dirt from running out. And so to say that there wasn't any runoff issues is incorrect because, because there were some major runoff issues on that property with that red dirt.
Well, the, the, the other, I guess the other consideration is going to be if somebody comes in and goes through the process and gets a zoning change, or we're going to let other businesses just basically go in and set up shop with no business license, no certificate of occupancy, not doing any of the things that other developers are required to do, so.
Mr. Creel, excuse me. Mr. Creel, I got a couple. So that currently was a fill permit? Did he get the proper fill permit to come and fill the property?
No permit had been issued.
So currently, as it sits, the drainage plan was not approved.
There was no drainage plan. There was none submitted.
There was no, no drainage plan submitted. The fencing, is fencing on the zoning that we passed in 2017 or 18, does it require to be a screened fence?
Yes.
And the current fence, is it screened?
No, it's not.
All right. The, the building that's supposed to have been erected when we approved the original zoning plan, is there supposed to be a porous barrier around that building? You know, a cement barrier, an asphalt barrier for trucks or any other vehicles to be parked?
Well, I'll, number one, he is required to have a building. You, our ordinance says enclosure of use. The other thing is hard surface parking is required.
Do they have any hard, are there any vehicles being parked on that property now?
They have equipment out there. They've got a bulldozer. What's happened is the equipment that was up front and in clear view has been pushed back into the trees. And I have some pictures, if y'all would like to look at it. It's, it's a...
Some of the council members made, but, so, again, you know, we're, we're just saying, we're now informing you of what you need to do. The original zoning was, was passed. He still has that. And that's, that's where it sits right now. So, anyway, any other comments, Mr. President?
Dr. Tizil?
Yeah. Jerry, so, so the property was originally zoned agriculture?
Yes, sir.
All right, and it was rezoned commercial? And the reason was this was going to be business-related equipment or vehicles that were going to be parked there or stored there, correct?
No, sir. It was, he was going to build a construction office on this property. His drawing that he presented showed, it was a, as, like I said, it's always, it's a sketch. It showed asphalt parking or hard surface parking in the front. And in the rear, it showed gravel, which is included in the package. And that's typical for a construction office. You know, you have the big equipment that tears up asphalt and concrete. So in the front, everything facing the front would be very attractive. It would be, you know, brick front building and those kind of things. And then in the rear, you know, you're allowed to have a yard for the storing of your equipment and maybe some building materials in the back.
So in the five years that ensued, nothing was ever presented to the Development Review Committee to be sure that things were developed properly and permits were pulled and everything. So over the ensuing five years, there's been some activity out there, but no permits were ever issued or pulled. So everything that's occurred out there has been without the knowledge of the, excuse me, without the, the knowledge of the Development Review Committee.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. All right, thank you.
Jerry, is this another case where we approved a zoning change that we probably shouldn't approve this talk with? We've done this before, when somebody come with a picture. Several times this has happened. And maybe we need to quit doing it. Without some kind of plan, some kind of idea, just changing property. And nothing happens, we have problems with it. It's something we need to look at.
Bless you.
God bless you.
Okay, Demi?
Mr. Creel, I, I may have missed something when I stepped out of the restroom. Now, this went to the Planning Commission on March 2nd this year, right?
No, it came back to the Planning Commission. What happened is originally, originally in June of 18...
Before we go, I just want to start from March 2nd, '23 forward. Because I'm just more curious as to why the, the commission voted 13-0, I mean unanimously, to approve this outdoor storage facility with the limestone parking. Were they not given all of this information?
No, they were, they were given this information. It's in your, if you read your, your minutes, we covered everything that we've just covered here.
Right, and, and so in, in what capacity do you believe that they came up with the wrong conclusion unanimously? And we should then overturn their decision?
Well, I think they looked at this as a, well, it's a conditional use. And the conditional use says that certain things, Mr. Lee had said that he would put a building on the property and some other thing, and agreed to a fence going around the property, which is required for outdoor storage. And I think there was, you know, just look for a solution if we can.
In this, in this meeting on March 2nd, 2023, this reference to the DRC that he missed or didn't go to, is this the one we're referring to, the one that was supposed to occur 30 days after this date?
Well, the 30 days would kick in after the council makes their decision.
Okay, so he hasn't missed a DRC appointment
No.
post this March 2nd, '23 deadline?
No, if the council, if the council were to approve this, then within 30 days, he'd be required to come back to us with the civil engineer plan for the entire property.
Okay, so I, I understand the allegations of these past transgressions. And, and I, and I'm inclined to, to fall in line with them, but that wouldn't, that doesn't resolve where we move for, where we move, moving forward? How we, how we get to a resolution where he can develop something that falls within what we, the guidelines that we require? How do we get there?
If the, if the conditional use is denied, my understanding is, is that he needs to go back and come back with a plan to build what he originally said he was going to build, which is what he presented, you know, during the zoning change case. If this is approved, then what he would have to do is to, he'd still have to come in with a site plan showing drainage and everything else. That wouldn't exempt him from any of those other things. You know, it would just be used as a outdoor storage. Now, one of the things that the, the Planning Commission asked a question about was is chain link fence allowed? Yes, a chain link fence is allowed, but it has to be a solid fence and it has to be eight feet high. And so there was discussion about, well, how do we make that a solid fence? Well, you know, you've seen these chain link fences that have slats in them. But the question came up about these, these wind screens like you see on a tennis court or something like that. Those things, you know, although that might create the appearance of a solid fence, those things don't last very long and they're, they're difficult to maintain, so.
Mr. Demi, I just want to clarify, it's a minimum eight-foot fence and it has to screen or hide any equipment or trucks or vehicles that is on the property. If eight foot is inadequate, it has to be higher than eight foot, correct, Director?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I, I guess one of the problems I have here is, is had it not been for the transgressions that you, you guys denoted, would you approve this? Had it not been for those concerns that predated this, would you approve this? And I'm asking because I would like the council to make a decision on this and not as some retributive action because of something that occurred in the past. But just on this. I have nothing else.
Okay, Dr. Tizil?
Hypothetically, sometimes that's convenient. Hypothetically, sometimes that's convenient. Perhaps here it is. So if I were going to construct something under these circumstances and here was my original plan, and then I go back to the DRC and say, I've got to reconsider the scope of what I had planned to do. At that point, nothing's been approved by the DRC, correct? And it may be that instead of a big building, I want a smaller building or I want to change the location or I want to do something else. I want to go from a fence to a landscape barrier or whatever around the perimeter. But I'm assuming that happens from time to time or it may happen frequently. Would that be accurate? What I thought I was going to do, I'm no longer able to do. And I would also add that that something like that usually occurs pretty shortly, right after the planning commission or some guidance from the DRC. That that intervening period of time is generally not four or five years. It may be a number of months, but it's not unusual for developers to revise what they intended to do originally, is it?
Well, it's all right. If someone comes in with a site plan initially and it shows a construction office on there and interest rates go up and they say, well, you know, we're not going to be able to build as big a building as we would have liked to have built, that's something that can fall within the scope because the use has not changed that's being proposed. But if someone comes in and proposes a certain use on the property and then comes back with a completely different use, that's where there would be an issue. And that's where I would say, we need to go back to planning commission and go back to city council. We just did that very thing with the property down here near Rodenburg. The the developers came in and went through planning commission and council to build town homes there just this side of the Holiday Inn Express. But after they had gotten their necessary approvals, they came back and said, you know what? We've decided not to do town homes. We're going to do individual homes on that property. So we took that back, went back through the planning commission again, you know, and through the council. So, I mean, it was a it was a different use of the property. So we feel like that the right thing to do is to make sure that planning commission and council doesn't come back to us asking questions about why did they go build something totally different out there than what we approved this for?
So basically, the the difference, I may be missing something, is the size of the office that was going that's going to be constructed?
But the change in use, the change in use is what triggered him going back. Like I said, if he if he all he did was reduce the size of the office, we I might mention that to y'all, but we probably wouldn't say that that justified going all the way back through the process. But when he changed the use from the construction office with everything that he had presented to just having an open lay down yard out there with all this equipment parked in in clear visibility.
And do you do you have to have a structure under some so under these circumstances? Do you have to have a structure?
Yes, sir. You always have to have a structure under our ordinance.
Okay.
Because we have to issue a CO. We have to have a structure with an address in order to issue a business license.
So here, are you finished?
I'm done.
So here's the difference. The request to change the zoning was to put a building that would hide any construction material. That was the request and that's what we approved. And the residents in and around that area, they didn't have a problem with that, having a building that would conceal an open lay down yard. The now the conditional change that is being requested would allow for an open lay down yard with a little office off to the side with all this riff raft or equipment or vehicles more in plain sight as people are coming in as as it's being used. So that that's the big change in this. That isn't what the intent of the zoning change was for. That wasn't the intent. So that's that's why I requested a denial of this of this application.
Okay, well, I guess with that being said, we're going to go ahead and call for the question. It was motion and motion by Mr. Glavine to deny, second by Mr. Barrett. All in favor of the denial? Against? Okay, six, one. Resolution D. Carrie?
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plot approval for 185 Veterans Avenue.
Move by Ms. Newman. I'll second that. Any questions? Ms. Newman?
Okay, what this is, this is a property on Veterans south of the railroad track. You know, you have the building there that's got finders keepers in it right now and it's a very large piece of property. All they're doing is dividing it in half.
Okay. Okay, call for a question. All in favor?
Just real quick. You said it's across the railroad track?
On the south side of the railroad track. Yes, sir.
It's empty lot on side of it? That what they doing is subdivided that lot, not the building itself?
No, no, it they're coming south of the building. So the building will be on one piece of property and then south of that will be a vacant lot right now.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Good spot. All in favor? Okay, seven, zero, motion carry. E.
Resolution to vacate two utility easements located at 380 Porter Avenue to allow construction of seven single lot family subdivision.
Move by Ms. Lawrence, second by Ms. Gans. Any questions?
Jerry, this is that lot where they were trying to build townhouses or anything a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir.
Just listen for a change.
This will be for single family houses.
I know that, but I said, this is strictly easement you're doing here.
Yes, sir. That's all.
Is it this easement inside the concrete wall?
Yes, sir, it is. There's two, there's two easements in there that are no longer necessary. And what we do whenever we're vacating an easement is the developers required to go to the utilities and get a signed approval that they have no objection to it. And that's what's happened. Those approvals are in your packet.
And when you turn this, what how much land do you wind up with? How many acres you wind up inside the concrete wall? Since you're taking this out, this will all be part of his property, correct?
It appear it appears, Mr. Lawrence, that four of those large lots are going to be within that concrete wall area. And he did tell us that he is leaving the concrete wall. There'll be seven lots, but only six will have houses on them.
Okay, but it's all inside the, did it be gated? Because it walls, you have to come off the the circle to get to it, you know?
Yeah, they're not going to gate it. They're they're going to leave the fence around it, but not gate it. Because if they get into a gated community, there'd be some other issues involved. But it's going to be a six lot, six lot open subdivision within a seventh lot that is where their drainage, you know, the drainage pond?
Right.
They're going to continue to use that for the drainage for the subdivision.
Okay, well, that's on the other side of the wall. That's that's on Benaki. So they counting all the property inside of Benaki too?
Uh, not all of it. There's a there's actually two lots on Benaki, the one to the south and the one that's to the north of a 20 foot drainage easement. The one to the north is not being used. There's nothing proposed for that. But the one to the south where the pond is, that is a part of this subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor? Okay, six, zero, motion carry. I need a motion on consent agenda.
I move.
Move by Ms. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tizell. Ms. Lawrence.
I see we had a lot, the thing with the Navy base, exactly what is that about? The naval construction?
That that said, yeah, I mean, this.
I know we have a lot of stuff with that. Go ahead.
It's 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 just a memorandum of understanding between us and them. If they need our assistance, we can go over and help them without any. And so far, they haven't needed our assistance. It's exactly the same one we've signed for the last several years, except they took the bomb, took the bomb dog out because they bought their own.
Thank you. That's all I.
That's it?
That's about it. Everything else is tied up to the issue.
Okay, Mr. Demme? None, Dr. Tizell?
Yeah, a few things. There are there are three items, item D, E, and F. These are dealing with just compensation. Should should we have received any documents with figures at our seat or no, not necessarily? You know, you know what I'm asking, Christie?
So these three are the just recently, we did new just compensations for these three parcels.
Right.
And rescind the old just compensation. So basically, this is just rescinding old, the original just compensation.
Okay, and we previously approved?
Yes.
The new appraisals.
Yes.
Right.
Either there were a couple over the last couple meetings, so I don't remember exactly.
And all three of those are that situation, basically. All right, thank you. On item H, this deals with the gravel lot license agreement for with the IP for the Keesler Air Show and which provided just a crease of an opening for me to ask, when might the IP be looking to improve that parking lot and getting asphalt down? I know that we were looking to, at one point, it was say, they're going to be doing that or looking to do that as soon as the north project's done, but.
I think they the timing is about now to to ask them because.
I like that. It's about now. Okay.
And it will be now and we'll move forward with that. But we just, I think they had a pretty successful manufactured homes conference. And in order for that to happen again, which I think they sold 700 rooms, I think there may be an incentive for them to to do what they said years ago, back when Duncan and some of those other ones were around. So we we don't have a status, but we'll get a status because I think it's the timing is good to say, hey, you need to do this. Give us a plan.
All right, hold it. Keep pushing that idea, Mr. Mayor. I like that. The last question is item N chief. This is on Van Hook Hall, using for a training center, more or less. What are we currently using some location for a training center or?
We have a very small room in the PD that we use.
Gotcha.
What we'd like to do is be able to have an area big enough to open it up to other cities that come in, hopefully get them to pay.
Gotcha.
Part of what it's going to cost.
That's all I need to know. Thank you, sir. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine.
I have nothing.
Ms. Barrett? Okay, well, we'll move on. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Okay, any against? None? Mr. Demme? Demme, D, E, and F. Dr. Tizell?
Nothing.
None, Mr. Glavine?
No exceptions.
And Mr. Barrett? None. Six, zero. All right, let's move on to code enforcement here and we finally made it there. Mr. Creel, you're up next. One, two, three.
Okay, item, item A on the agenda, Larry Allen, 334 Crusus Street. This property is still in violation.
That's not a lot. You mind if I give him a give him a call and see if I can get him the, mind if I give him a call? I might ask for 30 days for Ms. Allen. Mass for 30 days. A motion, second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? 30 days.
Item B, Oriole Fam Lou, 250 Benaki Avenue. This property is still in violation.
Now, when we when we started this case, when we started this case, it was just about the property. But what's happened since then, just recently, is that the door's been kicked open and people are going in and out of there. So we're going to be bringing the structure back to the city council for another hearing.
Yeah, we had a lot of problems with Lou.
Yes, sir.
Lot of problems.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on Oriole Fam Lou? Anyone here to speak on Oriole Fam Lou? Consider that matter closed.
Item C, Vinlock Tram et al., 420 Division Street. That case has been resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. I need a motion on the routine agenda.
Move.
By Mr. Lawrence, second by Dr. Tizell. Ms. Lawrence?
He got here. Glad to see him. Hope we got, I hope we got plenty of money coming in.
Not yet, Council. Good afternoon. We do, we did ask Mema for some additional funding, some advance funding. It's going to be about 4.638 million, but because of the large amount of it, it's going to take a little bit. We got confirmation today, they did agree to it. So it's not in the system yet, but hopefully by the 25th, our next council meeting, I'll have an update that it's in the system and coming our way.
This large amount was anything in particular? But it is pretty big.
Part of it is the reconciliation change order y'all approved tonight. It's over $700,000. We paid for that and we're asking for reimbursement. So they're going to add that on to some advances. And we need some advanced funding for the payment in May to our contractor because he's starting to ramp up with the better weather. So we just have a lot of increased costs on these two projects and we told them we're going to need a little bit larger advance to take care of it. Thank you. Thank you.
That's it. Anybody, anyone else? Okay, all in favor of the routine? Seven, zero, motion carry.
So move for a recess?
Motion to recess. Let's see, move by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Lawrence. Any questions? All raise, all in favor? Seven, zero.
I think we. Oh, no, no, you know, you're fine.